I'd like to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into order. This time, I'd like to ask you all to please rise. I'll ask Commissioner Josh Lael to have the invocation and I will have the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear the Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to gather here to go about Alexander County's business. Please lead and guide us in each decision that we make. Thank you for each family that's represented here and their concern for our county and our communities. Dear God be with us as we leave this place. Allow us to get to our homes safely. Thank most of all for your son. In the name of prayer, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Does any of our commissioners have any report they'd like to give tonight? If not, you have the agenda before you. The entertaining motion to approve the agenda as is, well, excuse me, with the addition added into the consent agenda, that being the resolution requesting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to appoint a review officer for Alexander County and also out of number 13, no, 13, isn't it? Out of number 13, the equalization review board, we have a change in that also. That would be the only changes that would, that should be there. And, go ahead, Jamie.
Remove item number eight.
Okay. And out of number eight tonight, we will need to remove it due to the fact that the presenter is not going to be with us tonight because of sickness. I'd like that in the form of a motion at this time.
Move to approve as stated.
Motion's made in second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the cap raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Madam Court, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No one has signed up for public comments, so we'll move along to item number two. Item number two, public hearing, close out of 2011 scattered site housing project. I'd like to call on Lori Powell with the Western Piedmont Council of Government, Community Development Administrator.
Good evening, Chair, Manager, Board Members. Tonight, we're here to have the close-up public hearing for the Alexander County Scatter Site Housing Grant 11-C-2302. With this project, the grant proposed to rehabilitate six houses and we ended up rehabilitating eight. And one of those was a clearance and relocation of one home. And then also, it called to do emergency repair on eight homes and we ended up completing 12 homes. Nancy Colley was the main administrator for this project and she retired last summer in 2014 and I'm here to finish it up. This grant benefited all very low and low-income families and the CDBG financed 100% of it and the county had no funds in this grant. This is the last grant that the county will receive because of the way the funding is, they have cut this category out. So from now on, any housing will have to be done through the North Carolina Housing Family, Single Family Rehab, or the Urgent Repair Program.
Does any commissioners have anything they'd like to ask at this time? If this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience that has anything to say or would like to ask any question, they also have the opportunity to do so at this time. Lori, the only thing I'd want to make, all the money was spent.
Yes, all the money was spent and we did not send any money back.
Right, that's what I thought. I thought that was right. And no one else have any questions? At this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the cap raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, at this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve the scattered site housing project as this concludes that project.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close out the 2011 scattered site housing project.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor in the cap raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Lori, the only thing I hate is I hate this program's ending because this program has tremendously helped a lot of people.
Yeah.
And we've had that conversation several times with the COG and this is one of those programs that the Council of Governments took care of and made sure that the citizens of this county and the uniform area, that the money was applied equally and distributed to so that it would help the individual. And it's a shame to see it go away.
Nancy Colley was a big part of that.
She was. And Nancy Colley, most of you don't know, she retired at the end of last year and she's left the COG, but she was extremely instrumental in administering these funds and did a really, really good job with them and made sure that it was scattered, scattered out, carried out the way it should be.
Well, all's we can say is maybe talk to the legislators because they're the ones that help appropriate this money so they can talk to Washington because like I said, this program has been cut. But you know, maybe with the help of talking to the legislators, they can bring this program back years down the road, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate you being here tonight. We have with us tonight, Robin Nicholson for Duke Energy District Manager. She's here to give a Duke Energy update.
Good evening and thank you for including me in this commissioners' meeting tonight. Just wanted to provide you a brief update on Duke Energy, where we are today. A lot's been happening in the last few years at our company and wanted to share with you the current status of that. The main thing I want to commit, want to mention is that our commitment to North Carolina, to our communities, to each and every area that we serve our customers. We are committed, we're here to serve our customers, we are here to help our communities and to be a part of those communities. We know that our success depends on your success and we are patterned to be there. Talk briefly about our commitment to North Carolina. We've been in this Piedmont, North Carolina region for over 110 years, 111 years almost. So we've got deep roots. We've been here a long time and we plan to be here for a long time to come. Since our merger with Progress Energy, we have become the largest utility in the United States. Just in the state of North Carolina, which is the largest footprint in our six states that we cover, there are 3.2 million customers divided into two utilities, two operating utilities. Duke Energy Carolinas, which is the traditional Duke Energy that we're familiar with, and then Duke Energy Progress, which is the legacy Progress area or old CP&L for those of you that remember that. There's a lot of statistics provided to you here. I just want to hit a few other high points that we have 13,000, over 13,000 employees working in the state of North Carolina. And the number I'm proud of too is that we have almost 9,000 retirees still living here in the state of North Carolina and being a very active part of our company. They're still very active in volunteering, working with the company on different projects and being there as a part of our, as a part of our community. Our payroll in North Carolina alone is over $1 billion and we continue to make investments in philanthropic areas with over $16 million of an annual investment to help with community support, low-income housing, and additionally, helping with economic development where we've provided over $775 million in capital and more than 5,300 new jobs. But let's break it down even further and talk about our commitment to Alexander County because Alexander County is very important to Duke Energy. Currently, we serve almost 12,000 customers. That's 12,000 installations, not necessarily individual folks, but 12,000 services to your residents in Alexander County. 23 of our employees live in this county and even more, 27 of our retirees live in this county. So here again, our retirees are here in your community, they are active. Our employees are here in your community and they are active. We pay annually $270,000 in property taxes and we're very concerned and very dedicated to the commitment of our philanthropic nature here as well. Over the past three years, there's been roughly $25,000 provided to various groups and agencies in Alexander County. Most recently, the two I'd like to highlight are $2,000 that we gave to the FFA program at Alexander Central and also, over the past year or so, we've given about $3,500 to the Community and Schools program for Alexander County. But the one that really stands out is the $250,000. That money actually went to CVCC, but it is directed specifically for the Alexander County campus of CVCC. That will go a long way in helping with the development of the new skills building that's planned and bringing more jobs, more education to Alexander County. Our economic development folks, we've provided about $3,000 over the last several years, but more importantly, we are there to support and to provide help to any economic development activities that go on and there to be a resource and provide all of our work behind that. Talk briefly about why Duke Energy is important. We try to maintain and have managed to maintain the, some of the lowest power rates in the nation, particularly in the southeast. And from the chart you can see here, we continue to do that. Duke Energy Carolinas and Duke Energy Progress are two separate entities still and so they have separate rates as well. But you can see, we're well below the national average of 13.16 cents per kilowatt hour and still below the, excuse me, the South Atlantic region of 11.54. So that's why we're important to the area. We've tried to keep our rates down. We work hard each and every day to keep our rates down and lower rates help with economic development. They help with our communities, they help with our citizens who live here. Our generation mix is one of the ways that we manage to do that. It's a very important way that we manage to do that. And from this chart, you can see what that generation mix is. Nuclear, which is the least expensive fuel source that we have at Duke Energy, makes up almost half of our generation mix. Nuclear is pretty steady. It's our baseload. It's what we rely on 24/7 and it is, like I said, the most expensive, excuse me, the least expensive fuel source that we have, which is what we are charged by the commission to provide. Coal still makes about 32% of our generation mix. That number is declining and natural gas has been growing. We've been closing some of our coal-fired plants over the last several years to changing some to natural gas and others we've just been shutting down. Hydro is still a very important part, as we all know from living here in the region of the upper Catawba. Hydro is very important. It makes up a small amount of our generation mix, but it's still extremely important. And also, the renewables. A small number in the overall mix of our generation, however, it's a number that is growing and a number that we continue to work with and to support as well. You may have heard in the last week that we just announced a joint venture with the Department of the Navy for the United States Marines for a 13-megawatt solar installation that will be built on the property of Camp Lejeune in Onslow County. That will be owned and operated by Duke Energy. It'll be interconnected to the Duke Energy Progress system and we will be purchasing the power from that and using that as part of our overall generation mix. We're always looking for ways to make increasingly clean energy sources. And as I mentioned before, we've already replaced and retired many of our coal-fired plants and we expect to retire many more as the time goes on. We've invested a lot of money to make sure that the coal-fired plants that are still operating are clean and to find other alternatives for clean energy. We continue to work on our closure plans for the ash basins. It's been exactly a year, right out of year, Super Bowl Sunday of last year, that we had the incident at Dan River that made coal ash a household name. Coal ash has been cleaned up in the Dan River. We've been working under the guidance of EPA, DNR, and also the similar resources out of the state of Virginia. The Dan River has been cleaned up to their approval levels. We are back to normal operations there. We have a gas turbine plant there at Dan River now that we operate and the Dan River plant had already been shut down. So this was coal ash from a retired ash basin. But that is one of many coal ash basins that we have across the state of North Carolina and also across our six states that we service. It will take a long time to get this all worked out, but we are working daily to come up with our dedicated closure plans. We will find a good and economical way to handle the closure of all these ash basins and we will be following guidance from EPA, DNR, and the legislators. One other thing I want to mention when we talk about water and water resources is the new fund that has been generated as a result of the Dan River incident and that is our Water Resources Fund. This falls under our philanthropic area, but that is $10 million that has been set aside for basically any, any program, any project, any activity that can relate to our water, to the water resources. It can be environmental, it can be educational. There are several guidelines for that and it is being managed by the Foundation for the Carolinas. It is, it does have input from individuals at Duke Energy, but there are outside sources also monitoring that and making the approval on any requests that come to the Water Resources Fund. So here again, we once again are committed to maintaining our relationship and our commitment to our communities and all those around. That's the end of my presentation. You have my contact information there and I would encourage you, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to field any now and also at any time later, feel free to contact me.
Robin, the thing that I want to say too is, you know, I appreciate you being here tonight and I appreciate the fact that Duke Power has taken the opportunity to give CVCC the $250,000 to help improve the educational process for the citizens of Alexander County and to make the CVCC expansion come to life. That was one of the very valuable sources of money that we were looking for and hoping that would happen. It did happen and it happened with a group of folks working diligently together to look at the future of Alexander County, do the things that needed to be done to make sure that our folks were educated so they were able to do the jobs in the future and the jobs now. And I just want to say thank you very much, thank Duke Power, and I want to thank the entire group that worked together to accomplish this for the better good of the citizens of Alexander County.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that and I'll just throw in, as an alumni of CVCC, I was glad to see the money come through as well.
Makes a difference when you take care of your alumni then.
That's right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a few questions, but, and I wanted to echo what Chairman Yoder said. We greatly appreciate that. That money's going to be put to good use and will greatly benefit Alexander County and citizens here. You said you retired half of the coal plants since 2011. Are you replacing those with solar? I mean, I assume some of that is solar, but you're less than 1% of your generating capacity, I saw. But is natural gas making up a lot of that difference?
Natural gas is making up a lot of it. We're not technically replacing every single coal-fired plant that we shut down. For example, if you're traveling down Highway 16, River Bend, right before you get to Mountain Island, if you're familiar with that plant, it sits off to the left if your head is south on 16. That plant was closed down two years ago and we technically did not replace anything their own site with that. A contrast to that is if you're headed up I-85, on the other side of Salisbury, right before you cross the Yadkin River, you look off to the right and you see the Buck Steam Plant. That is a coal-fired plant that we have shut down, but prior to shutting it down, literally adjacent to it on the same property, we built a gas-fired plant. So there's an example of where we have replaced one for one gas, excuse me, coal and gas. So we've got a combination. We are adding other solar, we are adding some more wind as well. Most of that obviously is not in this area just because it's not, wind's not conducive here for generation. But we are replacing it and keeping our, our capacity supplies at an approved level just to make sure that we have no issues on days such as today when the temperature starts dropping so dramatically. But yeah, gas has been the main, probably the main replacement for any generation that we've retired in coal.
And I'm sure, well, today's technology, there's basically, and I'm speaking just from what little research that I've done, that you basically can't replace everything with renewables now. So, and I know it's next to impossible to get a nuclear plant built in the United States now. Is that still the case or is it changing somewhat?
We are in fact, working on a nuclear plant.
Okay.
Down near Gaffney, South Carolina. While it's nearly impossible, it's not totally impossible, but it does take a great deal of time. Construction alone of a new nuclear plant will run you about 10 years. That is after you have gotten all of the permits, all of the license, all of the approval from the various agencies that oversee nuclear, which could take, you know, seven, eight to 10 years itself.
Wow.
So while nuclear is not dead, it is not something that we have abandoned, we still strongly believe in nuclear. It's a safe type of generation and it's a very economical form of generation as well. It does take time and we do have the Lee plant under, on the plans, it's on the drawing board, I'll say, but until we get through all of the upfront permitting and licensing, we can't actually start.
One other question, I'm sorry. The coal ash, now fly ash is used in concrete. What is coal ash? Is there anything that it can be used for?
Well, fly ash is actually a sort of a byproduct of coal ash.
Okay.
It's all, it's all coal ash when you get down to it.
Right.
Fly ash is the, the drier type of ash that comes out and then you have bottom ash, which is, if you think of, if you've done a big fish fry and all of the sediment that goes to the bottom of the grease, well, that's sort of, think of that sort of like bottom ash. And that is pretty much not usable for anything. But you don't have nearly as much of that as you do fly ash. Fly ash is the dry concentrate of the, of the burning process of burning coal. So you have a lot of fly ash that is used for concrete and it, but it depends there again on the mixture of the coal that has been burned. Someone asked me, is there not a simple answer? I said, no, it just depends on where the coal came from, what type of coal it is. And I hadn't, and before I got in this job, I had no clue there were so many different types of coal. But yeah, it just depends on the mixture of the coal that's being burned.
Is the coal ash that you have at those dump sites, or is it usable for anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Some of it is. A lot of it would be primarily used mainly for structural fill. It wouldn't be as potential for concrete, but it could, any of it could be used for structural fill.
Okay. I just try to ask questions because I try to find out things.
Well, it's a complicated issue and we've all gotten a very fast and furious lesson on coal ash over the last year. More than we probably...
That's to say the least, right?
Well, you know, four years ago, I entered this job, I knew nothing about hydro and three days into the job, we had high-water events up the upper Catawba. So I learned all about hydro real fast while I'm learning all about coal ash real fast too.
Does it take long, does it?
No, it doesn't.
And you never know what's going to occur. Any other commissioner have any comments or statements?
Well, thank you again for the opportunities, big.
Absolutely, Robin. Thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for the update and thanks for what y'all, you all do for our community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda tonight is natural gas expansion agreement and resolution. I'd like to call on David Eisenhower, EDC Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, I have two items that require action and one item that's just informational in nature. The items that are, action items tonight are both related to a pending application with the North Carolina Department of Commerce regarding a natural gas line extension to Mitchell Gold Bob Williams. The goal of this project is to extend an existing gas line that's owned and operated by Public Service North Carolina. To extend this line approximately one mile from NC 90 to the main plant, Mitchell Gold, located off Millerville Road. Total estimated cost of this project is $260,000. With your approval of these two items tonight, we'll be moving forward with a request from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for a $200,000 grant. As a requirement of the grant, the remaining $60,000 that's left in the construction estimate will be paid by $50,000 in matching funds from the county. In addition to that, Mitchell Gold has pledged $10,000 for the project, but more importantly, Mitchell Gold has pledged to commit 20 new jobs for this project. The first of the two items that need your approval tonight is the pipeline construction, operating, and sale agreement. Now, as the name implies, this agreement outlines how this project will be constructed. The county will be responsible for the construction of the pipeline. We will bid the project and award the contract for construction. It'll be constructed with the approval of PSNC and built to PSNC standards, just like they would build any other pipeline on their system. It will be, it will be owned by Alexander County, but the agreement spells out that PSNC will actually be the operator of the line. So for, from the customer standpoint, it's not going to be any different than any other line. It's just, it will be a little bit unusual for you in that, as far as I know, this will be the first time that Alexander County has ever owned a natural gas line. So we're breaking new ground here, hopefully, assuming that everything keeps going well. The agreement also outlines how the pipeline will be handled once this project is completed and the grant period is five years. So after the five-year period, this line will revert to ownership of PSNC because we don't want to own a gas line any longer than is necessary. But because of the grant, the county does have to own it during the period of the grant. The agreement, we're not going to go through the 20-some pages of the agreement tonight, but it has been reviewed through the county attorney. It's been reviewed by the county engineer. Of course, Mr. French has reviewed it and I've looked at it more times than I care to tell you over the past few months. So as I stated, this agreement is a requirement for us to submit the full application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. The other action item is a resolution, which is just simply a one-page at the end of your packet there, or behind the operating agreement. And this resolution just simply states that Commissioners support this project, approve applying for the money from Commerce, and will commit to the matching funds. And gentlemen, I think this is a very worthy economic development project. It supports an existing industry, it extends infrastructure in the county, and it helps create 20 new jobs. So I would recommend that the board seriously consider approving both of these items and I will be glad to answer any questions you may have about this.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? I'd like to address to Mr. Eisenhower.
Well, I've got a, just a couple of comments. I'm sure PSNC, this is their standard contract, is that correct or is this drawn up specifically for this?
Well, actually, the original, this is, this is new to PSNC as well. PSNC has never done a project like this. So we're breaking new ground and the best, the best that I've been able to find out, this has only been done one other time in North Carolina. So that's one of the reasons it took a little while to work through this agreement, but the original agreement came from Department of Commerce as a sample. And then we kicked it back and forth between the county and PSNC for several months before we got something that PSNC's legal team has agreed to and our legal team has agreed to.
Well, I'm not going to go through and just a couple of things. Are we sure that they're going to take this line at the end of five years because again, we don't want to be in the natural gas business?
Yes, sir. I'm confident they will. If they sign the agreement, it ties us both into exchanging, changing the ownership from the county to PSNC.
Well, I read, I read all the agreement and the only thing that I saw really that stood out to me is like, it says, "PSNC shall assign a construction inspector who shall have the right to inspect." Are, are they going to inspect because?
They will inspect, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. We've discussed that and our county engineer will be heavily involved in the inspection process too, but PSNC will definitely inspect the line because they obviously want it built to their standards.
Well, that's what I'm, I want to make sure that they do inspect it and at the end of this five years, it will be to their standards and they will take it.
They will. Not only will they inspect it, but I mean, they're going to hold our hand through this whole process. I mean, before we issue a bid package, they will have to approve the design of the line. They'll approve, like I say, the bid package. They won't tell you, they won't be in charge of who you award the contract to, but we have, will have pre-approved contractors that this bid package goes to.
Okay. So really what makes this different is the grant that's been awarded for this? Is that what, kind of, what's the difference?
What really makes it different is that the county owns the line and that's, that's not... not, that's not something that's the norm for PSNC.
So rather than the company spending the funds to build the line, this is another way so they don't have that cost upfront, makes it appetizing to them.
Yes. Basically, they'll get a new customer, expand, expanded line, yeah, for free.
Is there, is there a reason that we have to wait five years for them to take over ownership?
The five-year period is dictated by the Department of Commerce.
Okay. Does the money come at one time or is it over a five-year?
No, we'll, we'll pay for it all at once.
Okay.
Yep.
So $50,000, 20 jobs, basically.
Yes, sir.
All in short.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like a pretty good deal.
Well, and you keep, you give the, give the industry the ability to expand. Well, and you know, it's got a five-year depreciation schedule on it, so they're going to take it over and, you know, taxes on it will be, it's a good deal for them too, so.
It's a win-win. Anything else, Gary?
Or David.
Of course, excuse me. David, I'm sorry.
Come up here.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Dave, is there anything else that you'd like to say about this?
No, sir.
Does any other commissioner have any other question? This time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve both agreements at one time and I feel like that's permissible since it's the same project.
So moved.
Motion made in second. Now, if there's any other discussion. There being none, all those in favor, indicate raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise, and motion carries. Thank you very much.
The, the one other thing that I did want to mention, Mr. Chairman, you have a couple of photographs in your package. Those photographs are before and after photographs, I believe, from Craftmaster Building Reuse Project. The reason those are in there is we had a, a grant inspection visit in Alexander County on January 22nd and we were fortunate to have with us Scott Hamilton, who is Executive Director of the Appalachian Regional Commission, Olivia Collier, who is Chief of Local and Regional Affairs with Appalachian Regional Commission, and Pat Mitchell, who is Assistant Secretary Rural Development for the North Carolina Department of Commerce. So these three joined together and came to Alexander County on a investment tour, I guess you would say, to see where some of the money that they have spent in Alexander County has gone to and where it is going. ARC put some money into the Hidnite Sewer Project several years ago, so we took a, a quick visual tour to Hidnite just to see the area where their money was spent and how it benefited the community. We stopped in it at Craftmaster because Department of Commerce, of course, put a lot of money into the renovation project there. Mr. French joined us on a tour of that facility. We then came back here and met with those folks along with Anthony Starr, Executive Director, Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and Sherry Long, Assistant Director of the COG. We came back here and toured the, the building here on CBCC campus. Of course, ARC is putting money into that project as well and just wanted you to know that we had a good visit with these folks, are very pleased with how their money's being spent so far and it's always a good opportunity from an economic development standpoint to have people like this come visit because it gives me a chance to not only talk about these specific projects, but just put a bug in their ear about future things. So just thought I'd let you know that they were here. That's all I have.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate the work.
The, the Craftmaster new project really turned out great, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Item number five, buy local campaign update. Mr. Gary Herman, Small Business Development Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Ms. Starnes, Mr. Manager. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, talk to you a little bit about the buy local campaign here in Alexander County. Like you said, I am the Small Business Development Coordinator, so my job is to be an outreach and support arm for our small business here in Alexander County. Our business list, we've got over 500 businesses on that list. It's, includes the larger industries as well, but we have a lot going on here in the county and it's my pleasure to be involved in helping these businesses succeed here in Alexander County. So of course, we do a lot of video business spotlights and things of that nature, so we're going to roll to the next one and here's our little bumper music for our, where we went on. You want to go back to that? It's not working. Okay, anyway, anyway, what we're talking about, business spotlights. Who all have watched some of our business spotlight videos? I see hands, that's good. So that's, appreciate that. We've done 35 business spotlight videos since we started it up. The, actually, the buy local campaign started back in 2012 and I see Bud's in the audience and some others. They actually began the buy local effort before I became an employee of the county and that was with Bill Stuffers for the property tax bills. So when I came on board in October of 2012, we put our heads together and tried to think of ways how we can support these businesses and grow our sales tax dollars here in the county. So hopefully, we're making some headway out there and I have been keeping up with the sales tax dollars and they seem to be on the rise, so can't take credit for it, but you know, we'll, we'll hope that this is part of the reason for that. So, so like I said, we've done 35 business spotlights. We've done, you know, anywhere from Brushy Mountain Golf Course to the Urgent Care of Mountain View, Pollard Raceway Park, Miso's Restaurant, I mean, the list goes on and on. So, and a lot of these are just businesses who, you know, their, their customers have called up and said, "We want you to do a video for this business, you know, they really need some support or some help right now or, or we really enjoy, you know, going there and we'd like you to spotlight them." So it's been a lot of fun, we've had a lot of fun with these people and they've been really appreciative and, and supportive of the EDC in this effort. So you can watch the videos on the YouTube channel, which is youtube.com/AlexanderCountyNC. And as you can see on the screen, we've had over 7,000 views of these videos since they've gone online. Next, please. And of course, social media. Today, if you want to publicize anything, you have to have social media and that's another fun part of the buy local campaign. As you can see on the screen, the buy local Alexander Facebook page, we have 807 likes and we try to have several updates daily, whether it's original posts coming from my office or if it's sharing some posts from local restaurants or businesses who have specials going on that day, just to kind of keep the, the citizens engaged. Twitter, we've got 487 followers on our EDC Twitter feed. VisitAlexanderNC, I hope you're all familiar with that. We've been working hard on that. We've got our website up and running, that's visitAlexanderNC.com. And we also have an accompanying Facebook page and 878 likes on that and 204 followers on Twitter. And on the Visit Alexander page, the purpose behind that is we're not only trying to engage our own citizens, but we're trying to attract some visitors to our county. We have a lot of things going on here that folks maybe in Hickory or Statesville or Mortville, even Charlotte, whatever, they don't maybe know what we have, but you know, we've got our Rocky Face Park, we've got the big events, we've got live music, we've got some attractions that people don't have elsewhere. So we're proud of Alexander County and we want people in adjoining counties to, to know about it. So Visit Alexander is, is going well. Next, please. As you can see here on website analytics, this is through Google, apologize for the small print, the topmost graphic is for the Alexander County EDC website. We've had 926 visitors over the past month to our website and the majority of those visitors are going to our business listings page. You can drill down in analytics and see what people are actually looking at and, and so we try to keep that stuff up to date and keep people engaged in that. And you can also see the cities that people are coming from. So looking at the EDC page, they're from Hickory, Taylorsville, Charlotte, Nashville, Huntersville, Atlanta. So you never know if that's a potential business or industry that's looking to come this way.
109 from Nashville?
I know. I mean, it's, some, some of it kind of blows your mind, but you know, we always have hope, you never know. The bottommost graphic, we've got 495 users, that's for our Visit Alexander NC page and you can see where those visitors are coming from, Hickory, Charlotte, Taylorsville. I've got my graphic here, I can't see that up there. Is it Nashville, Huntersville? I mean, the list goes on and on, but people out there, especially in our neighboring communities, they're paying attention to what we've got going on here. And so we're hopeful that they're coming over here and spending their money with us rather than all of us going over there and supporting their community. Next, please. And I referred to earlier, the business listings for, that's on the EDC website, contains over 500 listings, whether it's a, you know, plumbing or a restaurant or, you know, what have you, a grocery store or whatever, it, it's on there, complete with name and address, phone number. And if anyone goes to this list, if, if their business is not on here or information's incorrect or if someone knows that something's been omitted or is out of business, something that needs to be updated, please let me know. We'd like to keep this updated as much as possible. And you know, one of the things that's, that's close to everyone's hearts here in our county is we like to eat, I know I do, right? So anyway, the restaurant list has gotten a lot of downloads and people are putting that on the refrigerator and they're able to have it right there at their arms length. So next, please. Not sure if you're familiar with Alexander County Nail, that's our new monthly program that we've been doing since May of 2014. We created this program at the county manager's request. Hopefully, he's happy with it. He's smiling, I'm not sure if that's good or bad. We're, we're trying our best. I'll give kudos to Chad Ritchie, who's back in the control room there. He's an excellent videographer and he's my right-hand man. Unfortunately, I guess I'm the best you could do as far as a host, but I am trying my best and we're trying to have fun with it at the same time. Hopefully, the viewers out there are learning more about our county and enjoying the program. We've had 10 episodes so far and 2,200 views, so a good effort, I believe, and it looks good. I know we've got some folks in, in another county, they think we stole their idea and we're doing a better, better job than they are and they're mad at us, so I think that's a good thing.
That's good.
Anyway, and Reader's Choice Awards. This was a partnership between Economic Development Corporation and the Taylorsville Times. We just, there have been other communities who've done this and we decided, you know, why not? We thought it would be a good way to promote our local businesses and while at the same time helping our local newspaper, Mike is in attendance, but they did a really good job helping us with the Reader's Choice Awards and I'd like to commend the public for their participation. Had over 250 surveys completed, whether it was online or in paper. More than 10,000 votes were cast for the approximately 90 categories that were in the Reader's Choice Awards and a lot of happy businesses out there who've got their awards hanging on their walls. So hopefully, just another way to enhance their, enhance the promotion of these businesses and plans are to, to do it again this year. So we think it was a worthwhile endeavor. Next, please. Continuing the campaign for buy local, we, we do have an e-newsletter that we use to promote not only the buy local campaign, but the EDC itself. We have 600-plus subscribers to that. If you're not on the list and you'd like to be, you just let me know. We do have a weekly radio program with Mr. Attitude, Rick Gilbert, that's at 7:45 on Wednesdays on WACB, 860 on your AM dial. And we, we talk all things Alexander County, whether it's programs the EDC has going on or if it's events coming up in the county, whatever's going on here, we, we try to talk about that and, and spread the good word. And cash mob is something that's relatively new. We haven't actually done one here in the county, but it's a growing trend across the nation. Basically, it's where you have, you choose a business, you get the support of, you know, whether it's five, 10, 15, 20, however many people, and you have them commit that we're going to meet at a certain business at a certain time and we're going to spend $20 each at that business. So if they're going to spend 20 bucks and you've got 20 people coming, that business is going to make $400 in, in like an hour. And then after that, we'll make a pledge that we're going to go to a local restaurant as a group and support, support that restaurant. So you're hitting two businesses at one time. We're hoping to get that kicked off in March. So if we have any recommendations for a, a good first business from, from you guys, that'd be great. Otherwise, we're probably going to go back to the Reader's Choice Awards winners and I choose from there. But hopefully, that'll be a, a good thing that we can keep going. Next, please. Again, like I said, there's my contact information. Folks out there can email me at GLHerman@AlexanderCountyNC.gov or they can always give me a call at 828-632-1161. But campaign's going well, actually enjoying what we're doing and hopefully, the, the people out there are enjoying it and getting engaged in their community. It's what it's all about, it's community engagement and letting folks understand the importance of keeping their, their hard-earned dollars here in Alexander County and supporting our community and not someone else's. So that's my presentation. Any questions?
Very good. I think it's a good program, Gary, from everything I've heard, from what I've seen and looking at the newspaper and these folks that have won, you know, and I think it's a good way to promote local business, it's a very good way to do it. The only question I'd have, is there any data that you have showing from the beginning until now, how much it has grown or anything as far as the folks spending, I mean, other than looking at the local tax base, okay? Sales tax. Is there any way you can tell, have you, do you have any data showing what type of effect this has had on the local economy as far as people shopping at home?
Nothing really tangible, just when, when I'm out visiting with a business or, or with the public, you know, I'm hearing people say, well, you know, I'd never really thought about it, you know, but now every time I go shopping or whatever, you know, I think twice before I go out of the county, I think, well, can I get this somewhere here? You know, can I go to a shop, you know, downtown or can I go to Tractor Supply or, or Walmart or a local hardware store before I go to like a Lowe's or something in another county? I think the only tangible way to actually measure it is, you know, sales tax dollars, which do seem to be on the rise. That'd be your biggest way of measuring there, so.
Anyone else?
I will say the Visit Alexander, I was with a client of mine in Claremont last week and he and his daughters do the Rocky Face climb.
Oh, yeah.
And he was very complimentary, number one, of Rocky Face, the facility, and then also the staff there. He said they're extremely helpful, very engaged every time he's been over here and he just feels like that is, is such a good asset for our county. So you know, pass that along to the people that work out there. It was a very good compliment.
Great, great.
Very good.
A real good thing, more recognition we get, the better it is for our county and kind of like Milton, I travel a lot and I run up with a guy the other day at a business. His sons are into motocross, they come to the motocross, they eat at our restaurants, you know, they come through, they're going to buy gas, they're, you know, doing things. So, you know, the more we can get out there, the better it is. Appreciate what you do.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Keep up the good work.
And we will, we're going to try hard.
All right. Thank you very much. And now, I know, just stand there, don't leave.
[laughing]
The next item on the agenda is item number six, Highway 127, Bridge Maintenance and Repairs, Gary Herman, Small Business Development Coordinator. Gary?
Yes, sir. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. North Carolina Department of Transportation, they will be performing general maintenance on the North Carolina Highway 127 Bridge, which they call Bridge Number 91. And of course, that's over the Catawba River there in Bethlehem on the border of Alexander and Catawba Counties. The proposed work will include pressure washing and painting, bridge deck repairs and structural steel repairs. DOT has hired Astron General Contracting to perform the repairs and the maintenance. Basically, it's going to be about a five-month project. The bridge project will impact traffic flow somewhat, however, the work will be performed during off-peak hours to minimize the impact. So work on the bridge deck will not result in narrowing or closure of traffic lanes during the hours of 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It will not affect traffic from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That's Monday through Friday or on holidays.
Okay, so all the work's going to take place at night or in the weekends?
Basically, yep, that's, that's correct.
Which is what happened, which is what they tried to do last time.
Yeah, I believe that's right.
Which wasn't that long ago.
Well, and how did that go? Do you?
It went pretty well, I thought, for.
I remember that somewhat.
They had, and the, the bridge, the south, south end of the bridge was unstable and it kept separating from the road and there was a big-
and it kept separating from the road, and there was a big gap there. But they finally got that stabilized now. So, they repaired it, I don't know how many times, and finally, they did the big repair and fixed it.
There's a bit of bullet. Well, here, it looks like a lot of the work's gonna be occurring from a barge that they're gonna have on the lake, a twenty-two-by-twelve-foot barge. And so, they're gonna be working, you know, from the water underneath the bridge. So, of course, you know, the stuff they'll have to do on the actual bridge surface will be done in off-peak hours. So...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm going to.
Okay. Well, you go right ahead.
We just had a meeting at COG last week. The bridge has been moved up for reconstruction for about two thousand and twenty, I think it was. I'm not sure of the date. But the thing that I would like to suggest to the citizens of Alexander County, if you will go in and look at the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and what they're getting ready to build over in Catawba and Caldwell County, a brand-new bridge that will be taking construction, it'll probably start, and I think they're gonna start acquiring the land here shortly. It's gonna be a tremendous bridge between Caldwell and Catawba. And, you know, if you folks get the opportunity, if you write a letter to the Department of Transportation, we've been trying to get this bridge replaced ever since I've been on the county commissioner, and it's been going on before that. This bridge really needs to be replaced in, between Alexander and Catawba. It's been worked on, I know of, since I've been the commissioner, at least three times. And they continue to keep working on it and patching it, and that bridge has traveled a tremendous amount, especially between the hours of five AM and nine AM, and three-thirty till about six-thirty at night. But we need the citizens of this county to write letters to the Department of Transportation, so maybe they can get that moved up, to replace that bridge, because they continue to push it out, push it out, and with the new format they have now, it's harder and harder to get these things done. And I just wanted to say that before I forgot about it, because this conversation came up in the COG meeting last week, and there's some other places that have, their bridges have been moved up for some reason, but for some unknown reason, Alexander-Catawba Bridge on one-twenty-seven. No such luck.
Well, and I would add to that, write letters to the governor, State Senator Andy Wells, and our new House Representative, Mr. Zachary.
Because, I mean, it's a good way for us, we really need a new bridge over there.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the last traffic count numbers I saw there, about twenty thousand cars per day.
Mm-hmm. And that's what they judge it on, the number of traffic that goes through there. That's why the bridging over there on three-twenty-one's going to be replaced faster, it's because of the traffic count. We don't have enough volume going through there to move it totally up further, but...
I was thinking it would be better if we had less cars going across the bridge, but if you wanna get the bridge replaced, then we need more.
If we get enough people just to drive back and forth.
There you go. There you go.
We can do that.
Just wait till the little clickers are out. Be safe there. But yeah, that is a good letter-writing campaign. Be great. I'll continue. The bridge project is expected to begin April first, and anticipated completion date of September eleventh. That's this year. Major work will run from April sixteen to June ten. So, if there will be some delays or things happening, keep in mind the dates, April sixteen to June ten. Just a fact, the bridge was built in nineteen sixty-eight, has an overall length of nine-hundred-and-forty-one feet, and consists of seven total spans with a structural steel substructure. And you've got pictures in your packet of where they're gonna be performing the work, and current conditions of the bridge, and things like that. So, I am by no means a bridge expert, but happy to present this information to you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Of course, you'll be putting that on all the website and everything. Keep it out there so people will know.
Sure will.
Very good, sir. Thank you very much, Gary. Appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the agenda tonight, recruitment update on foster-to-adopt families. At this time, I'd like to call on Tenille Hillman, DSS Human Services Coordinator. And if I didn't pronounce your last name right, I totally apologize.
It's okay. My husband's from Maryland, so I don't say it correctly either. My name's Tenille Hillman, and I am the Foster Home Licensing Social Worker for the county. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of information about our current homes. We currently have thirty-one licensed foster homes in the county, that are licensed by our county. And that includes five licensed relative placements. And a lot of times, I get asked, you know, if we still have a need for foster homes. So, today, I was trying to figure out exactly how many of our homes that we're using. And currently, we're using approximately seventy-seven percent of the homes that we have licensed. But in the past year, we have used a hundred percent of the homes that we have licensed. So, every home that we have licensed right now has had a placement within the past year. So, and one of the reasons why we always have a need for additional foster homes is because a lot of the times, we have families who come to our program who wanna foster to adopt, and at some point have the opportunity to adopt, and then they no longer want to stay licensed and to take in more kids. So, I was just kinda looking at the numbers for that today. And then, out of the adoptions that I've completed this fiscal year, I've completed six adoptions, and four of those were relative adoptions, and two were foster-parent adoptions. And then, I also have seven adoptions that are pending, that I've been working on. And out of those, four are relative adoptions, and three are foster-parent adoptions. So, and the numbers were kinda similar to that last year. We had five, five foster-parent adoptions last year. So, out of, we currently, in December of two thousand and fourteen, we had forty-six children in foster care, and approximately half of those were in foster homes that are licensed by our agency. So, we, like I said, we're always doing recruitment for new foster homes. We kinda did a promotional video we're gonna show here in just a minute. And we're gonna show it on the government channel in connection with, there's a short film called Removed, that kinda gives a, just kinda gives you an idea of what it's like for a child when they come into foster care. So, we done a video that, if, you can go ahead and show that now, if ever.
You know, he is such a good little boy, has such a good manner.
Hey, girls.
Hi, Gary.
Hey. Hey. You know what?
Can you turn volume up?
Gary, now, you worry me when you start this thinking thing.
Well, I was seeing some signs, and then I heard some things.
Oh, no. He's now seeing signs and hearing things.
Teresa, Teresa, you know, when I'm driving around the county, I see these signs that says something about fostering, and then I heard something on the radio that there's children in our county that need a home. Do you know anything about that, Teresa?
Yes, I do. What they're talking about is providing a home for children that come into foster care.
Well, Teresa, what is foster care? What's that all about?
Well, Brenda here, I don't know where you know it, but Brenda here is a foster parent. She's been doing it for a long time. I get her. And she provides care for a child that legally comes into DSS custody, and it's usually due to abuse or neglect. And we were just talking about how rewarding it is to help a child either go home after the parents make needed changes, or even go into an adoptive home.
Brenda, can you tell me more about foster care?
Well, Gary, it is pretty simple, but there are some requirements. First of all, you've got to have a very big heart and a loving, stable place for these kids to stay. And you must be twenty-one years of age, you have to have a stable income, and you have to attend math classes.
Math? Is that like directions to somewhere?
No, no. That's where you go, they have classes, and you go to learn what it takes and all the requirements to become a foster parent. And it also gives you the opportunity to decide if fostering is right for you.
I've always wanted to do something to help children, and I'd like to learn more about these classes. Brenda, where, can you tell me more?
Yes. The first thing you need to do is attend an information session. And they're getting ready to have one of those at DSS on February the twelfth. This is where you go, and you find out all the requirements and all the information about it, and you hopefully will get all the answers to all of your questions.
Is these classes gonna be during the day when people are working, or is it gonna be at night?
It will be in the evenings, after work.
Okay. When, when again? When was that meeting again?
Well, if you have any questions, the first thing you need to do is call Tenille Hillman at the Department of Social Services. The number is six-three-two-ten-eighty, and her extension is three-four-seven.
I've heard that Tenille's a pretty smart person. She works out there at DSS. I think I'm gonna go out there. Teresa, would you be willing to go with me out there for that meeting? What, when was it again?
February the twelfth at six PM at the Department of Social Services.
Teresa, will you go with me out there?
Yes. I mean, this is something I've actually been interested in. I'm kinda excited to go.
Maybe Brenda, you'll go with us too?
I would love to.
Why don't we hold this panel long? Let's just do that. All right. Great. Wonderful.
Okay, that was a little hard to hear, but, so Teresa and Gary are two of my coworkers, and then the lady in the middle was Brenda Price. She has been a foster parent with our agency for many years, and has a lot of experience. Like they were saying in the video, we're getting ready to have an information meeting. It's scheduled on February the twelfth at six o'clock PM at our office, the Alexander County Department of Social Services. And then, the classes begin the following week, and they're held on Monday and Thursday evenings. We usually start around six o'clock and usually end around eight-thirty, nine o'clock. There's a total of twelve meetings. And the classes are really kinda, I know a lot of times I have people who come to me, or call me, and say, I'm not really sure it's something I wanna do, but they're just interested in it. And so, the classes are really kind of intended to help you make that decision, whether it's something that's right for you and for your family. They're really kind of a lot of fun. They're, you know, we do a lot of activities and skits. But some of the requirements, you have to be twenty-one years old. There's some minimum, like, physical and mental health requirements, and you have to pass a criminal records check, a child protective services check. Your home has to pass a safety inspection and a fire inspection. The child has to have their own bed in the home, and there's some things like that. But we talk about all those things throughout the classes. So, I don't know if anyone has questions, or any comments?
That's a very good program.
Thank you.
You know, and one of the things that the foster adopted group does is they have a special program once a year where they recognize these foster and adopted children. And if you've never had the opportunity to go, you need to go at least one time. And if you go one time, you'll become addicted because of seeing how far along these kids have progressed after they have gotten with parents that are there to take care of them and look after them, and provide them with some of the things they need. And I always remember the kid that played the piano. I mean, the kid wanted to play piano all his life, and it still moves me. I still have a problem now, I'm talking about it, but it was very enriching to watch these young folks. And for someone to be a foster parent takes a very special person. And the key word that you had there, that you said, was a loving heart. You have to have that loving heart, and you have to be able to, to be able to be wide open with them. Because it's, you have to be special to do it. And I appreciate the job that you do, and that Social Services does, but I, you know, these people that are foster parents are really appreciate the job that they do, because they open their homes up and take care of these young folks. Because another one thing with Social Services is they try to get the kids reunited with their parents. And when you're a foster parent, sometimes they might be there two days, they might be there a long time. But having that home open to them, to give them a stable environment, is very vital to the growth and enrichment of that child.
Yeah. We really appreciate them too. It's kinda, it would be difficult for us to do our job without them. I don't think there's any way we could do it.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Tenille, you and Gary and Teresa, you do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. You mentioned the video Removed. You're gonna be playing that on the Peg channel, is that correct?
Like, I guess that's what it is, the government channel. Yeah, it's, we, yeah, we had to, we use some of the funds that we get to pay for the license to show it. So, yeah, we're gonna, I think we have a five-year license to show it.
What channel is that on, on Charter now? I don't have Charter, so...
I don't have any more either.
One-ninety-two.
I'll say it's a hundred, it's one-something, but I don't even know.
Channel one-ninety-two. The, is there any way we can get that posted to the website as well?
I think we, I think Chad and I had talked about that, so that might be...
Go watch that. I've seen the video. It is, it...
It's very powerful.
It's very powerful. It really is. It shows you what it's like from a child's point of view. But you guys do a good job.
You can, it's on YouTube as well. You can look it up on YouTube. Yeah, it's a little girl. I don't know exactly how old she'd be, maybe around the age of ten, but yeah.
And I would like to say, as the, as the father of a former foster child now adopted, we have, our daughter Lizzie is five, and people don't, you know, Larry sort of made me feel good, I guess, saying how special these people are. But, but this is kind of a commercial. But I can honestly say, it's, it's every bit as rewarding for the parents and/or the foster parents. Process is not easy, but, you know, we wouldn't have one of our daughters if we, if we hadn't, well, if my wife hadn't urged, urged us to foster. And, you know, and like I say, we, you know, it's given us a gift that we wouldn't have otherwise. So...
She's a precious little girl. She's...
She's a mess.
Tenille, what would happen if you did not have new families sign up to be foster families?
Well, when we don't have families, when we don't have placements like in the county, or homes that are licensed with our agency, then we have to send kids like out of county, or to group homes. So, not only is it more difficult for the kids, because I used to work at a group home, and, you know, there, there's a lot of kids there, and you don't get as much time with the kids, and it's just kinda a lot harder on the kids. But it's also a greater expense for the county, because, you know, the group homes are, they cost a lot more. Even like if we have to place a child in a therapeutic foster home, it's still a greater expense for the county, just because they have more needs, and we have to, we have to place them with a family who is able to meet those needs. So...
So, you always need new families to sign up to be foster families? Because some, sometimes they'll adopt them, or, you know, they're, your current families will adopt them, or their life circumstances may change, or they may move, or anything. So, there's a constant need for new foster families.
Right. Yeah.
I would assume that it'd be even more critical for the school-aged children if they had to go out of county.
Yeah, because then they're changing schools, and, mm-hmm. Yeah, because we try our best. I mean, it would be, you know, it'd be wonderful if we had a foster family with openings in every school district, but it never happens that way. But that would be fantastic. And especially, we always have a need, even a greater need for families who are willing to take older kids, because they're, they're a lot more difficult to place. Because there, you know, a lot of families that we have want younger kids. And a lot of times, it's understandable, if they have other children in the home and things like that, they have to take into consideration the other children. But it would be great to be able to have more of a selection of parents who are willing to take older children.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much. We appreciate your hesitation. You do a good job, and keep up the good work.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine on the agenda tonight, Alexander County IT Department update. Call on Mr. Greg Kronk, IT Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you for a few minutes about some of the things we're doing in our IT department. I am Greg Kronk, as Commissioner Yoder alluded, and I have had the honor and privilege to be your IT Director for sixteen years now. In fact, I am the only IT Director this county has had. So, I'm not sure, I guess that's good. I guess that's good. I did come about sixteen years ago. I will tell you that the county was a little technology deficient at that time. I've worked in several other counties, in a local government capacity, and there were some real needs. And I'll be glad, we're gonna talk about those, where we are now. So, let's talk a little bit about our IT office. We actually operate as three divisions. We have an information technology office. There's a staff of four. Myself, I have a systems administrator position. Justin Moose is that, fills that position for us. And we also have two computer support technicians, Sarah Bowman. Many of you know Sarah. Sarah's been with us about... Sarah's been with us about as long as I have. And we have a relatively new person there, Wendy House. So, and those guys do a great job. I couldn't do my job without my staff. I, I cannot take the credit for the things that we're able to do because these guys, these guys are top-notch. So that division supports 30 county departments. All, all various things in departments. We, we support telephones, we support computers, tablets, printers, telephone systems, software systems. And some of our departments, we support 24/7. Our emergency services folks, we do support them after hours on weekends for mission-critical applications. We do not come in because they cannot print. But I have been here many, many nights, many weekends, when we had issues in 911 or something serious like that. Our second division is our GIS and 911 addressing. We have two staff positions in that, that little, that function. George Brown is our GIS administrator. He's been here with us for a number of years. We also have Lisa Harrington, who is our addressing coordinator. And she also functions as a GIS technician. And she has been here about as long as I have also. So, and they're charged with maintaining and updating our GIS system and also managing our 911 street addressing program. Finally, a relatively new function for us that we've had for, for five years or so here, or four or five years, is our PEG website social media coordinator. That happens to be Chad Ritchie. We mentioned him earlier. He's in the back this evening. He does the video for our PEG channel. We operate two PEG channels. And PEG stands for Public Education and Government. We do not run a public channel, but we run an education and a government channel. And he also maintains all of our various websites and social media presence. So I thought it would be interesting tonight if we, we took a look back and kinda said, "Well, where were we in 1999 and where are we today?" As, as I alluded earlier, I was the only staff here. So we had a staff of one in 99. Today, we have four in IT. We had 65 personal computers when I came to work here. Most at DSS, a few at Health, and a few scattered around the county. As you see today's numbers, we have 452 PCs and laptops. That includes laptops. I had four physical servers that we maintain. Today, I maintain eight physical. We're running 55 virtual servers. The virtual server technology allows us to maximize that physical resource. Instead of this county having to buy 55 servers at $10,000 apiece, we buy eight and maintain eight. So it's been a real cost savings for us. Additionally, I think we had somewhere less than a terabyte. I would even surmise, we probably had half a terabyte of total data storage in this county. Today, we have at least 64. We're not using all of it, but we're getting close. We're always adding disk space. I had two buildings that were wired for computer networks in 1999. Today, I support 22 of them. And in 1999, our chief primary way that my department heads and staff were getting access to email and internet, they were using dial-up, 56K. Everybody remembers the modem, how slow they were. And today, we, we have a fiber optic network that connects 15 facilities, county-owned. We put it in, we manage it, and it runs at 1 gigabit per second. To give you some idea, kilobits a thousand, megabits a million, kilobits a bi, I mean, gigabits a billion. So billion bits per second. My internet speed in 1999 was 1.5 million bits per second. Today, we have a minimum of 30 million bits per second. And that is up and down. That is not just down. It's out, out too for pushing PEG video and things like that. And that is burstable to 100 million bits. And we're always looking for bandwidth. So major applications, we had about five. Today, we support 38. I had four telephone systems and now we have 13. And our primary recovery method in 1999 was a backup tape, magnetic tape. Today, we actually operate two data centers that are redundant. They serve as a backup site for each other. We also have a third facility that we use as a backup site to push all that data to and store it. And we additionally, we have some archiving technologies we use. Talk a moment about our GIS folks. In 1999, when I came, we did not have GIS. The county had just signed a contract to have the first digital mapping of all county real property done. And honestly, I tried to remember the date when we took delivery of that. I think it was 2002, somewhere in there. So today, we have two staff working on those. They support seven departments as well as our public sites. And they do support the citizens. Our, I will tell you that when we run the analytics to look at website traffic, GIS is always number one or number two, always. We've also worked to integrate that mapping technology with our folks in the field. We put that information in the cars for our deputies, our EMS folks. They get that mapping delivered to their vehicle now. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak about our GIS folks. They've actually won a couple of state and national awards. So I can say they're the award-winning GIS department. So they do a fantastic job. And the one other thing I'll mention is that we host a regional six-county GIS website. You can go to one site and search "six counties" for, for any type of, if you have a property owner, you'd search multiple sites, multiple counties. And to my knowledge, there's none other, there's no other site like that running in the state. In 1999, we were still addressing. We were still doing street addressing, naming roads and addressing streets. And I have, I have done a little bit of that in three counties. And I can tell you, it's not a fun project and it never goes fast. So it took quite a while to finish that. It was all paper maps, all manually signed. Today, that is, well, it's been completing a number of years. But it's all integrated in our GIS. It's all digital. And we deliver that to, to our folks in the field too. If you use any type of mapping software or mapping sites to navigate around this county or find an address, even the commercial sites, you are ultimately using the street addressing that we did in this county. That's where they're getting it from. So ultimately, it came from us. All right, now I'm gonna brag on Chad again. So it's his night. Talk about our PEG and social media and websites. In 1999, there was no PEG channel. We got that probably sometime around early 2000. Charter hosted it. And at some point, we decided we needed to run it in-house. We could, we could make better use of it in-house. And that's where it is. It is, it is house-hosted in the county administration building. That's where the signal originates. We manage the equipment. We have complete control over that channel. It is, the edu, the government channel is broadcast on Charter, Channel 192. The education channel is not on Charter at the moment. We are working with them to do that. Both channels, education and government, are broadcast on AT&amp;T, U-verse. And they have a different function on U-verse. You go to Channel 99 and you can select the, the local government channel you'd like to watch, so. Because I think you can get Colwells and some of the others too. Additionally, because only about 50% of our population have access to either U-verse or Charter TV, we stream all of that content on the internet. So as long as they have an internet connection, they can actually watch that, so. In 1999, we did have a website. We actually, the county has had a website since, I think, 1998. It was a static website. We pretty much delivered content to you. We just showed you stuff. And I, I must admit that the county commissioners' meetings were, were some of the very first, the minutes and agendas were some of the very first things that were ever put on a website in this county. Today, we support 15 websites. They are dynamic. The information flows from one to the other. We don't have to update every single one. And they are mobile responsive. If you have your phone or tablet, it will size accordingly. We additionally, we provide a number of onsite, online services. We've talked a little bit about our GIS is online, our register of deeds is online. You can get a gun permit online from the sheriff's office now. You can pay your taxes. We continue to see more and more applications coming out that will, will deliver to our citizens after hours, on the weekends, whenever it's convenient for them. Talk a little bit a moment about social media. 1999, social media didn't exist. I wish I'd have known that in 1999. I'd have, I'd have been a rich man, so. Today, we use a number of social media sites. Facebook, Flickr, the Google Plus, Twitter, YouTube. We use a number of them. And when we push information to one site, it goes to multiple sites. We don't sit and update every single site. We put it in one place, flows to all the rest. And I don't know about you, but if, if, what I have learned and found in this county is if something happens, in about 10 minutes, it'll be on Facebook and everybody will know it. So Facebook is becoming, and Twitter are becoming excellent means to get information out. We used to publish it newspaper, radio, now, social media. So we, we do a lot with social media. I thought to kinda finish up, we talk about where we're going. What we, what, what I see and what, what I, what we see coming down the road. Obviously, you've seen the stats. You've seen the tremendous growth in 16 years. We touch every department. I think every single department has something we support. We'll continue to see that grow. I mean, that's just a fact of life. You're seeing it in the private sector, you're seeing it in the public sector. Unfortunately, we're not going away. I guess that's job security. It's good for us. So we will see a more increased use for things delivered mobile. If you, if you, if you have children, you know your children have tablets and they have phones. Everything's about that. And that is becoming more and more. We will put more and more applications out. We will put mobile devices in the field. We've done that for our sheriff's units. They have mobile CAD terminals. We've done it for EMS. We're looking at doing it for, in building inspectors. We're looking at doing it for animal control. We're putting more and more technology in the vehicle to allow those staff to get access to the information they do need and make the decisions they need to make right there in the field. So we see more of that. That's coming. We'll continue to replace manual processes with paperless, web-based processes. We have a major new employee web portal that we are deploying in the next year. We are gonna give our employees the ability to log in, get information about their leave balances, get information about their payroll advices, their W-2s, and we will soon do time and attendance via that, that web portal. We're gonna do away with paper time sheets in this county after 16 years of trying. Another thing we've got coming, we've got the pictometry. I think that originated from this board, actually. It's a multi-angle aerial photography that they shoot every building from four sides. And we can generate that into a 3D look. Our emergency services folks are extremely excited about that. Now, instead of when you go to the aerial photography and still just seeing the rooftop, you're gonna be able to see the doors and windows. You're gonna be able to zoom and circle all the way around that building and see that building from four different sides. We are gonna continue to see more and more digital imagery of storing of records. Every department I go to, and the most, every department I talk to says, "We need document management. We need to scan this old stuff, get it online, and cut down on the number of file cabinets we've got." And, and we've done that with some of our departments. Finance has, has done some. Health and DSS have done some. And we're gonna continue to see that. And finally, we're gonna support more forms of communication. We talked about social media, messaging, texts, IM. We're already starting to see NextGen 911. And this county is preparing itself for NextGen 911. NextGen 911, for those that don't know, is the ability to take email and text along with phone calls. So if you're unable to call, you'll be able to text. It is not in place now. It is coming. We will see that in the next couple of years. And that's what I have for you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You're gonna hold classes on how to use all this technology?
Do I, I'm sorry?
Are you going to hold classes to show people how to use all this?
Oh, yes, yes. We'll, we'll, we'll have to do some training, so. Certainly on that web, employee web portal. That's a big step for us, so.
That's a big step the company I'm working for, they're in, they're, they're going that way soon now.
Yeah.
Getting rid of just about all the paper.
But, most companies are. We see this in IRDA, Catawba's doing this. Most private sectors already done this, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. What, I, I'm unfamiliar with, unfamiliar with this, but portable Wi-Fi. Are you, what, what is that? How's that work in a vehicle?
We, we've got a couple of different, we have actually two solutions we have deployed in the field. One would be a built-in air card, such as in a laptop, that we can operate, and there's two speeds, 3G and 4G. Some of our older stuff's at 3G. The newer, the newer stuff is at 4G. And obviously, it's much faster. And then we can operate something called MiFi's. And MiFi's are a, basically a wireless hotspot. So I can put this in and connect up to the, to the cellular network. And then I can service up to 10 devices off of that one device. And we've used both. Some of the older, most of the sheriff's office folks are using the, the air cards that are built into the device itself. The EMS has gone the other route. They actually have MiFi's. And they are looking to connect multiple equipment within those EMS units to that one MiFi. And they are, they're doing things like transmitting their, it's called a, and I'm not a medical person. So seven lead information is what Bradley tells me. It's the, it's the heartbeat, the pulse. And they're actually transmitting, they're able to transmit that to the hospital ahead of time. So they're actually using MiFi. That's neat.
And one of the things that's happened with those saved a lot of people's lives because all that information's already there at the hospital. Soon as the patient rolls in, they're ready to go whichever way they need to go.
Certainly.
And our EMS does a tremendous job with that.
They do. Our EMS has done well with technology in the last couple of years. They do well.
Yeah, and I was wanting to make just a couple of comments. The, when I came on this board six years ago, we were still manually assigning 911 addresses. So when a building permit was pulled, someone would have to jump in the car, go out, physically measure how far it was and assign that 911 address that way, so.
And, and for certain instances, they have to do that.
Right.
Your aerial photographer's always behind. So if it's a large piece of property, you know, you, you might have 500 feet of road frontage and they're not quite sure where that address is. So in some instances, they still have to do that. But the way we're doing it now is it's actually done with an iPad. We take an iPad out in the field. We have a GPS antenna connected to that. They drive up to the end of the driveway, hit a button, that's the location. It assigns the address and they move on to the next place.
It's much faster.
Much faster, much faster.
And I just wanted to compliment the GIS and George. They do a fantastic job.
They do.
You, you don't know how important, and I'm, you probably do, but that, the GIS system is so important to business. And I know that the, the Register of Deeds, we upgraded their software not too long ago. That was a vast, vast improvement to their software and running that department. All these things that we're trying to do is to make it easy for people to do business in Alexander County. And it, it has. It's made a tremendous difference.
I, I would cut, I guess, second that motion. I'm on the GIS with, I mean, being in real estate business, I'm on GIS multiple times every single day. And, you know, being able to, being able to click a live link for, to the deed booking page and it jumps, you jump from the GIS to the Register of Deeds, right there to the deed booking page. You know, in private business, time is money.
Yes.
And, you know, and it's, and it's just, it's, and I deal with counties other than Alexander. And Alexander's is definitely as easy, if not easier, to use.
Excellent.
Than, you know, and I'm pretty familiar with Catawba and Colwell.
Thank you. We love to hear that feedback.
We're, we're, I'll say, we're there. And actually, in my opinion, we're, we're ahead.
Thank you.
It's definitely much more user-friendly, definitely, yes. Anyone else?
Just wanted to say thank you for the work you do. And it looks like you guys are in a pretty good position to head on into the future and technology's really the way of the future. I got three grandkids and they can all motivate around an iPad and a cell phone really better than I can, so.
Yep. Very much so. And we appreciate the support of this board and especially Rick French. That's a big part of why we're here.
So how long will it be until the computers take over?
Gosh, that scares me, actually. I'm old school. I hope never.
I think about the bubble wrap every time somebody asks that question.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks. Good deal. Thanks, Greg. Item number 10 on the agenda tonight, Board of Health Recommendation for Home Healthcare. Our home health program, which this time I'm calling Liam Wisnant, Home, uh, Health Department Director. I started to say Home Health Department Director.[1791.11]
I'll answer anything. Thank you for this opportunity. I wish I had better news. But I do come before you tonight to bring a recommendation from the Board of Health. The Board met on January 26th, 2015 to vote, to bring to you the recommendation to explore the possibility of selling the home health program. Some of you have heard before that the program has definitely been trending down. I've been before you many times to try to recruit patients and inform the public that they have to really demand. That's kind of been our theme for a while was to demand your local agency. Gary and his bi-local program has been hugely supportive as well as all of the media sources. We've had about a three-month campaign where we were really trying to engage the community and let them know, you know, we're, we're at critical levels. I've been here twenty-six years and we've had home health before I came. We started home health when there wasn't such a thing out there and there was a need in the community for the program, even before it was profitable, is when we began home health. And then as time has moved, you know, Medicare started reimbursing and it actually was a profitable program and we've grown. And we've made considerable profit for the, for the county in the past. But what we're seeing with the Affordability Care Act is, is lots of regionalizations, lots of mergers. What's happening is the, the big national companies are the ones, there's lots of memorandums of agreements, lots of mergers. We have eleven other competitors that have been here a long time. Those big national companies are really hard to compete with when you're, the hospital's outside this county, your medical provider's outside this county, and so we've really felt like we've been hitting our head against a brick wall for a long time. We actually, um, in the last six months were in the red for the first time ever to the tune of costing the taxpayers over thirty thousand dollars. We, several months back, did some aggressive measures to try to bring that in control and cut back. It's really hard when you're small and you're pretty much cut to the bone to start with, but we have decreased that considerable. We're only a little over ten thousand dollars in the hole at a six-month point. And I'm, I'm not going to give you huge background unless you want that because tonight is just kind of the beginning process. There'll be, it is not a short process. And that decline is not just Alexander County. So I want you to hear that loud and clear. We're hearing from, we're, there's very few county-owned home health programs in existence. Those that are out there are all struggling. I've not, I've been doing lots of research, finding out what's happening. None, none are thriving. There's one or two in the state that are holding their own. Lots of those are small, very rural, more down east. I'll give you a few examples. Watauga, Ash and Allegheny County sold their home health and they actually had hospice several years back. Caldwell County sold their program two years ago. Stokes was sold last year. McDowell-Rutherford-Pope is in process now. To River actually projects to be sold April the first of this year. And To River is Avery, Mitchell and Yancey. Lincoln County has lost tremendous amount of money and is about where we are now. They're just exploring the process. Catawba County still has home health, but has been drastically hit. And Albemarle Region is way out east. I hope you don't want me to pronounce part of those counties because Gates and Camden and some of, Birdie are some I can say. Some of the other ones are really challenging. But they have programs in five of their counties and they, per their health director, are bleeding, hemorrhaging money. And they've done aggressive measures in the last year and have not been able to correct it. So I don't want you to think it's, it's any fault of staff. I have lots of staff here because they have a tremendous vested interest. We are hard to win this program because we help so many people and we know we do it best, being local. But there's a point when I don't feel like we can expect taxpayers to pay for a program when there's private industry here to do it. There's eleven other agencies already here. And that's part of our competition. That's part of why we're here. So this recommendation is the beginning point to explore. If we don't maintain revenue, we have a certificate of need for our home health program. There is a moratorium on those certificate of needs, at least for the next year. So it is marketable. If we don't explore it now, my fear as a manager is we may lose that opportunity if we continue to struggle. And as those Medicare revenues drop, that's going to be less marketability we have, less potential to sell. Pope-Rutherford-McDowell's process took eleven months. So tonight, if you, depending on what your vote is, this is just the beginning part of exploration. There is lots of legal requirements, public forums, comment periods. So this is just the beginning. I've not heard of any county agency sold in less than ten months. And most of the time, it's more like a year to fifteen months. Can I answer any questions?
Liam, uh, as most of you all know, sits on this board, I serve on the Health Department Board. And explain a little, if you don't mind, about the employees that are there now and what is going to be taking place within the next year as far as some of our employees that are there for the nurses, physical therapists and that part. Would you please?
Certainly. I will tell you, we've already just as reducing some of our costs, moved some employees as positions come open. We're certainly looking at that, you know, can people fit in other positions to? We have one person particularly that's going to retire in the next couple of months. So we certainly are working on a plan to support all of our employees. Not a solid plan for every single person at this point. We did have to riff one therapy assistant position three months ago just to bring those, try to contain those calls. So it is painful for employees. But we are working on that. I will tell you, you know, there's still a lot of hopes that we can turn it around. It's funny, you, home health's up and down, so I know a lot of them still have hope. This week, we've had a lot of referrals. After the board meeting, it was like, wow, what happened? Eight referrals the next day.
Eight referrals in one day, the next day.
You know, you're like, wow. So, you know, depending on your vote tonight doesn't mean this is a done deal. You know, we can still have a little time and that's, the board has not just looked at this one meeting. We have been monitoring this for a long, long time. We have been campaigning. We have been out there. We have been trying to get in doctors' offices, hospitals, but those doors are closed. We hear day in and day out stories where people had to get almost belligerent to get our home health program. And I think we can battle that for a short period, but then I think after a while, people are going to stop hearing it. You know, after you hear that same thing over and over and over. But we are working toward a, a means to re-employ or move folks around in different programs. We are going to start doing a little more with primary care for our current indigent patients at the Health Department. So we're hoping some of that will, um, open up some opportunities as well. We've actually moved one person into more of the dental program that had a need. So we're doing even out-of-the-box things to try to take care of folks.
Well, now, how about the indigent person?
We, and that's part of the process. This, this process takes a long time because you will get bids. And there is a particular company that has helped every single county home health agency in North Carolina sale that is the expert. They walk you through that process because it is very regulated. But you, you actually will get proposals from these companies and To River actually did not accept the top bidder. It was a national, it's the largest national company, but they went with the second proposal because it had a better package for employees. For instance, they agreed to take on every employee that, that was there at the end. So nobody lost their jobs. So that's certainly something we would want to look for in ours too. They also offered better, um, better than the first option as far as employee packages. They also had a better indigent program. And all proposals should have some level of an indigent program. So we would look at that in depth to see, to make sure our people were taken care of. We really haven't had as many indigent as you would think. Single digits, five or six, um, patients in the last year that I would call truly indigent, that had no payer source. Maybe they were in a car wreck and then no longer could work and didn't have insurance. And so we would, um, you know, provide nursing. A lot of times it was dressing changes, supplies from a nurse visiting or, and/or therapy, physical therapy particularly from a broken something. But every program that would propose to us would have a proposal to take care of the indigent.
And the patient, and then, you know, if somebody didn't have a pay source, I mean, they'll be taken care of.
They would be.
I think some be vitally important decisions in this county. I mean, and, and, and most of you just need to understand that our, our home healthcare system in this county has been outstanding. And I've used them twice and, uh.
We appreciate that.
Well, I appreciated it more than y'all did. I can tell you that now. But, uh, well, maybe not can tell you that. But anyway, the point is that, uh, these hospitals, it's extremely difficult for us to get the referrals. Most of the hospitals now have a, a public relation, these, these, these caregivers, uh, they have public relations officers that are in the hospital. They're whining and, not whining, but whining, W-I-N-A-N-G, whining and dining the hospital to get themselves in there and taking care of, to get this business. And we're not able to do that and compete on this large scale. And it's just something that goes on in business and trying to get more and more business. And, uh, we've had a difficult time. And we've looked over this thing now. This is about the fourth time I know that we've talked about it and we've talked about it in the, uh, health board meetings. And, uh, uh, I think there's a, a plan for the, the employees. I, I think that, uh, some of them might decide to go to work with somebody else. I hope not. Because this group of nurses that has worked for home healthcare, and it's not that it's going to end tomorrow now, but I mean, it's, you know, something that, that we need to look at. But it's been a group of dedicated employees. I mean, they go out all hours of the night and during the weekends and they take care of folks. And, and, uh, it, it's been really good. And it's, it's sad to see this happen. But it's, it's not only happening here, but it's happening in larger cities and, and counties and, uh, it's finally caught up with us. I know Lincoln County talking to some of those folks there that they've had, that it's, it's not been cost-effective for them to continue to maintain. And so they are looking for, uh, a, a, a way to get out. But, uh, it's sad, but that's the nature of the business, especially with the, uh, Affordable Care Act. I think that's, uh, had a lot to do with Medicaid and, uh.
And I'm afraid you're going to continue to see cuts. They're already talking about future Medicare cuts. So makes it really difficult to compete.
And it's going to be interesting in this session of the legislature to see what they do with Medicaid. It's still on the board and there are things going on that still into effect a tremendous amount of us. And it's, uh, uh, I, I still don't know what the cost effect is going to be to the citizen yet. So it will be, uh, very interesting. But, uh, the board did vote. When I was there the other night, they did vote to recommend to the county that, uh, we sell or start the primary focus of obtaining a buyer and start the process for the home healthcare department. And, uh, uh, you know, uh, on a personal note, I, I, I don't want to see it happen. And I've expressed that concern to the board and said what I had to say about it. But when you look at it from a business standpoint, uh, as much as I hate to say it, it's, 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 it's the right thing to do, you know? While we still have access to recoup some money, to make some money off of it, or however you want to put it. So.
Public Health's mission has always been to ensure services and programs. And when there's eleven other private for-profits out there, the service is available. So.
And they're able to do it just as cheaply as we can. I, I, I do have one question. When did, and we've talked about these numbers for a long time, but, uh, I think it was like in the last year and a half. Am I correct when, when it really started falling off?
It has.
Okay.
And the last six, eight months has been drastic. And that's what we're hearing across the state. You know, even, even some of the big national Gentiva actually lost money, um, last year. So it, it's, it's a challenging market for even the large companies. So certainly no, um, we have an excellent staff, you know. I'd put them up against anybody. No fault of their own. They do wonderful patient care. It's just the market that we're in now. It's just that, yeah, it's just the.
Yeah, if, if your phone's not ringing, then, you know, there's not much you can do. But, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but two or three years ago, home health was bringing in five hundred thousand a year? And now it's losing money, correct?
Correct. We're, yes. We're, we're struggling and hoping to break even. But for instance, um, in, in two thousand, twenty-ten, we made almost four hundred thousand dollar profit. It went down to three hundred eleven thousand, five hundred ninety-four, and then a hundred and seventy-eight, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And this year, we're hoping to break even. Now, if we can keep those eight referrals coming in every day, I'll come back to you in three months and say, never mind. But I don't think we'll sustain that.
But you didn't have those eleven competitors five years ago, correct? Or they weren't as ingrained in the hospitals then?
They were not. There was not the memorandums of understanding. There were not the consolidations. A, a, an example to really brings it home to you. For instance, Catawba County Home Health is a county home health agency. Catawba Valley Medical is a county hospital. They entered into an MOU with Gentiva. They won't, they don't even refer to their own county home health agency.
Wow.
So I'm sure they're not going to call me. Now, the only way they get to us is if the person demands it. And then sometimes it takes two or three times. A good example, To River gave me the exact examples we hear every day. An employee came out of the hospital, asked for their county agency. They were told, well, we don't do that. We refer to, I'm going to do X. So I don't seem like I'm picking on one company that I'd like to pick on. She was like, oh, we don't do that. She's like, oh, yes, patients have a choice. Well, I'll have to go ask my superior about that. Well, when she came back, she said, well, if you're sure. Now, you know, we don't know what kind of care they give. Then got home the next day and guess who called? Not the county agency that she asked for. So that was five times she had to just demand. And that's what we run into. You know, patients aren't even asked. They are told, we've arranged for home health, they'll arrive. We've even got referrals that the patient was referred to us, but before we get there, another company's already gotten there and admitted them. The, the patient says, you know, I don't want to, you know, they've done all this work. I'm sorry. How they got two referrals, I don't know. So it is a constant battle that we've been losing for the last three years. It's just those networks. If you were Baptist Hospital and you could call one number and fax the patient record to one place and it'd be handled all over the United States, just makes it easy. Instead of having to go, now where's that phone number for Alexander County? So that's kind of what we're competing against, you know, one referral source and they've got every state covered. So it is a different, you know, we've had competitors forever, but they're certainly gaining, gaining ground because of those networks, those contracts. I mean, they're entering. And the new Affordability Care Act are penalizing hospitals for those readmissions. So these big national companies are offering some pretty nice incentives to, to help their bottom line. I can't compete with that. Is it?
So Liam, just so that this board will understand, tonight you're coming asking not permission to sell home healthcare. You're asking for permission to have this study done to see what the opportunities are out there or the feasibility is for someone to acquire home health. And then you'll come back with a formal presentation. Is that correct?
Exactly. The process, you will be very involved in the process because you are the owners of the home health program. So, you know, what, what, what the request tonight is, is to just start that process. And then there will be public forums. There'll be opportunity to see what our numbers continue to do. I'm sure all that won't happen for several months. So, you know, lots of attorneys have to get involved. There's lots of red tape with, um, a home health program.
Okay.
Okay. You said that certificate of need that we have is, what's the expiration or...
There's a moratorium on, so there's no new ones. There's no new ones for at least a year. Now, they could extend that moratorium or they could not.
Okay.
Lot of unknown about that. But we, we've, that's why I think we're kind of in that valuable window to, to start the process.
You think we can, if we just start it and it looks like the, the way to go, that we can conclude it by that one-year timeframe?
I think so. I do. Um, lots of the other programs have been somewhere between 10 and 15 months. So, you know, we're a little smaller. We, um, have great working relationships, so we can, you know, move a little faster sometimes. So To River, now they are three counties and they're about four or five times our size, but they actually had seven bids for their program. So I don't know what we'll see from it.
Okay.
You said the entire health board, were they unanimous in that it should be sold pretty much?
There was one abstention and then unanimous otherwise.
I just didn't have the heart to vote that night, if everybody wants to know.
I was trying to be nice.
I, yeah, but, but, you know, I don't mind saying it. I mean, home healthcare has been a, a tremendous asset to the citizens of this county. We've had dedicated employees. And, you know, uh, we lost our hospital and now there's some other things that are going on with the health department and they're trying to expand and that these employees will be able to fall over into that group, I hope, especially with, uh, having the PA there and doing some things that, uh, that's a, that's a physician's assistant, uh, PA is, uh, to, to, to have some other things for them to do. And yes, it's, it's very sad, especially when you've had the assistance of that program and seeing what they've done for a lot of our older citizens of this county and a lot of our younger citizens. And, uh, uh, these employees, uh, I can't say enough good things about them. They're hardworking, dedicated employees and, uh, uh, like I said, they go out all hours of the night and to, uh, to sit here and be discussing this tonight. It's, 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 it's just a sad moment. I mean, any way you look at it, it's a sad moment and it's, uh, not something that, uh, I'll take lightly, period.
Well, I think your point was well taken. You, you need to vote tonight, so you wanted to let the other's voice be heard.
But gentlemen, uh, this time I entertain a motion as to the feasibility study of selling home healthcare.
I make a motion to allow the expiration of the potential sale of Alexander County Home Health.
I'll second that.
The motion's made and there's a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. I appreciate you employees. I, I really do. And keep up the hard work. It's not over yet. I'm number...
Because IT department's growing, so they...
The IT's growing, yeah.
So they may have to...
I'm number, uh, uh, what am I, number 11. I'm number 11 on the, uh, agenda. It's the 2015, 16 legislative goals. Chairman Yoder and Vice Chairman Mayberry. Vice Chairman Mayberry, I'll let you go first.
Uh, we, uh, Chairman Yoder and myself and County Manager Rick French, uh, attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference, uh, January 15th and 16th in Moore County. Uh, actually, I think you were there for a meeting on the 14th as well.
One of you, Chairman Yoder.
Um, it was a, uh, two-day conference on, um, our legislative goals for 2015 and 2016. And I don't know the exact number that was voted on and passed, but, uh, it looks to me to be in excess of 30 or 40. I haven't counted it. Um, but the top five goals that were voted on by the, uh, the counties in North Carolina, and what this is, is, uh, uh, all the counties have the opportunity to send a voting delegate and Chairman Yoder was ours. And, uh, these legislative goals go through committees. Um, I guess they spend almost a year on the goals before they end up in the, uh, final, uh, vote. So, um, what came out was the, uh, top five goals, and we'll just discuss those. We'll not go through the rest of these. But, uh, the first was, uh, the number one goal was to, uh, support continued state funding of Medicaid and support efforts by the state to provide healthcare access for all citizens. And, uh, number two was seek legislation to restore the statutory requirement that 40% of the net lottery proceeds be allocated to counties for school capital needs and increase the annual appropriation of lottery funds until the 40% allocation is restored. Uh, the top, or the third most important goal, according to all the counties in North Carolina, was seek legislation to repeal the statutory authority under North Carolina General Statute 115C dash 431C that allows local school boards to file suit against the County Board of Commissioners over county appropriations for education. Number four, oppose any shift of state transportation responsibilities to counties. And number five, oppose unfunded mandates and shifts of state responsibilities to counties. And those are your top five goals that, uh, counties in North Carolina, uh, are trying to get, uh, legislation for at the, uh, North Carolina General Assembly.
On these, uh, top five goals, gentlemen, uh, uh, number, that, that, that one there about the legislation to restore the statutory requirement of 40% of the lottery funds, the state association has been fighting that and trying to get that brought back for what, Rick, three years now?
Yes.
At least three years. We've done everything we could do to try to get them to give the money back to the, to the schools and, and to the counties to use that lottery funds for the schools. And we need to continue to put pressure on them. When the lottery was first established, it was established so that 40% of that revenue would go to the school systems. And for some, no reason or another, the state of North Carolina decided to do to the lottery funds the same as it did to the highway funds, and that was take money from, out of it in order to do some other things. And that needs to stop. That 40% belonged to the schools. That's how they sold it to the citizens of this state for them to have that lottery and it needs to remain that way. And for some reason or another, they continue to bypass that. And, uh, that needs to stop. And when you look under the other one there, when you're talking about, just to give a little update and everything, on the local school boards to file suit against the County Board of Commissioners over county appropriations for education, they look to appeal that. Now, most of you know that the incident they had in Union County with the school board suing the Board of County Commissioners over revenue. And, uh, there was a tremendous lot of talk and a lot of conversation there. And it was extremely strange to me that the Union County Schools, every kid has a computer. Uh, they named off a few other things they have. And this one lady sitting over there in the corner, she says, would you like to come to our poor school system? We don't have anything like that. And, uh, but the point was, and what amazes me, and our school superintendent's here, but the thing that has always amazed me, in this county, I do not recall a situation to where the school board and the county commissioners have not sat down and come to a resolution about things that needed to happen. And that's always happened. We've always had a tremendous working relationship. That does not go on in other counties. And the association voted, it was, it wasn't a majority now, it was probably a, what, 60, 40 vote, Rick, at the most?
Probably a few more.
Yeah, yeah. And then it was, you know, to, to support that, to try for that not to happen because they felt like what needed to do, not what needs to happen, is that there needs to be, uh, uh, an, an understanding of going into litigation between the two boards to come out with a compromise instead of using tax dollars to file suit from the school board against the county. And the only person that's going to get rich and receive any revenue from that, I'm not going to call the department that has that employers that gets that money. But all of you know that it's attorneys. So, uh, that, that really bothered a lot of folks. There were several other things that got a tremendous amount of discussion and, uh, uh, some of them were good. One of them was about hemp, uh, growing hemp in North Carolina. That reached one of the top goals also because, most of you know that rope is made out of hemp and this is, and there was a lot of discussion. It's very interesting. And I hate y'all couldn't come and that y'all missed it, uh, because it's one of those, uh, sessions where you learn, learn a lot and you get to talk to other people about the situation, the problems that are going on in their counties. But this 40% is the one main goal that I'd like to see happen, and that, and make sure that the, the state doesn't pass any more mandates down to us. And they, uh, the, the only one that sort of bothers me a little bit, and I mean, I support the association, the, the majority won, I think anytime you ask for state continued funding on Medicaid, after what the state of North Carolina did for us by taking Medicaid away from us, I think sometimes you've got to be careful what you ask for. And, uh, I really do. But, uh, what I'd like to see tonight is like for us to, to approve these five items here so that we can be in total support of the association and what they're trying to do because they do a tremendous job for us down there. So if you all feel like that's something you'd like to do, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, I'd like to make just a couple of little comments before we do that. Uh, the 40% allocation, I think that's, uh, I think it needs to come back to counties like Chairman Yoder suggested. That money was taken, uh, to fill in the state budget. So, uh, that needs to come back to the, uh, local, um, taxpayers like it was sold to the people of this state. Uh, also, number four, uh, opposing any shift of state transportation responsibilities to counties. That's been talked about for several years now, uh, five years. And I, just from the quick numbers we did, we're looking at like 33% property tax increase in Alexander County if that were to happen. Um, and that's about all I wanted to say. But, uh, I would make a motion that, uh, we approve these five goals and that, uh, we support them and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion's made. Second, is there any other discussion? And the three of you have been on the school board, so you also understand where it comes from, it's 40%. And, uh, uh, and you know the relationship we've had with each other, so I think it's just been really, really good. There being no other discussion, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Personnel policy changes, item number 12, I'd like to call on Sylvia Turnmeyer. Sylvia is our Human Resources Director. She has some updated information for us.
Good evening, gentlemen. Included in your packet for this evening are several personnel policy changes related to, um, what we are facing with the Affordable Care Act. And, you know, if you don't hear about it daily on the news, you're hearing about it at least a couple of times a week as far as the changes that all of the employers are required to go through. Uh, for the small employers, uh, those regulations do not go into effect until 2016. But your large employers, such as Alexander County, because we have more than 250 employees, are required to, um, be in compliance with those regulations this year. Um, as far as the regulations, there's also, um, compliance and reporting and penalties that are all in effect for us now. The majority of how those regulations affect Alexander County is in how the healthcare coverage and our employees' work hours are calculated and then how we apply that. Um, there is a measurement period of, of 12 months that we will have and then an administrative period and then a stability period that's following. And for us, we have set that at a year. Where it becomes more complicated for us is when we have employees who change, um, status from full-time to part-time, again, because the Affordable Care Act is all based on the number of hours you work per week. Um, you know, our part-time employees are very valuable to us. We have several departments that depend on those part-time employees, you know, really to keep our departments functioning. Um, and then we also have smaller departments where we've had retirees that come back. You know, they retire with us from their full-time position and then they come back to part-time as well. So we use those in many instances. Um, but there is one, uh, stipulation in the Affordable Care Act to where, to truly be considered changing from full-time to part-time status, you have to have a break-in service of 13 weeks. If you do not have that break-in service of 13 weeks, then we would be required to carry that individual for insurance during that entire stability period, which is up to a year. Um, due to the financial constraints that that would put on the county, um, we've talked with County Manager and he met with the Finance Committee. We've also talked with the department heads in a, in a department head meeting last month and communicated that we would need to make a change in the personnel policy to reflect that, that when you have an employee that resigns their full-time position and they do want to come back part-time, we, we don't want to prohibit that. We want them to be able to come back part-time, but there needs to be a 13-week break-in service so that their status officially changes in accordance with the Affordable Care Act. And so that's what I have for you this evening. Um, it actually affected three different sections, just to make some clarifications in a couple of different spots. Um, but the main point is that the very, um, last section, which is Article Eight, Section Eight, rehiring, adding a sentence that says, "An employee who resigns from a full-time position must have a 13-week break-in service before he or she can be rehired into another position." So I would ask that, uh, you review that this evening. Be glad to answer any questions if I can.
If I read this correctly, they have the 13-week break, but if they had left in good standing, within three years, any accrued sick time, they retain that. So it's not punitive in that way?
No, it's not. And that's something we had built into the policy. So if for some reason they were to come back to another full-time position, uh, you know, later on, then we would be able to reinstate that. So...
Would you say this is one of the first of the many changes we'll see with the Affordable Care Act in regards to how you handle and manage your employees?
Well, I, I hope this is the last big change. I mean, there's a lot of little ones. We did another major change last year and that was limiting the number of hours that part-time employees could work per week because the Affordable Care Act says you have to work, you know, below 30 hours to be considered part-time. And actually, that's a little tougher with local government because of the local government retirement system. We have to actually hold everyone to 20 hours or below. So, you know, a lot of different factors, but I, I truly hope this is the last major change that we will have. There, there's a lot of adjustments on the administrative end of it, but in terms of policy changes in our hiring, I think this is the last large change that you'll see.
At least in the last couple items that we've talked about, there's been an Affordable Care Act theme, it seems.
Is this something a lot of counties are doing the same thing?
And I, and like I say, I, I have yet to see the affordable part.
Kind of the only one that's doing this? Or I'm, I'd take it this is something everybody's looking at?
Unfortunately, it's happening all around us. I mean, we've, we've checked with other counties and, you know, some are in a different financial situation to where, you know, if, if they have someone that switches from full-time to part-time, they can afford to carry that individual on insurance for the year. But that's just not something that, that we have available to us. But other counties, yes, are making those changes that they need to, to keep their, their hours down.
Roughly what type of exposure, if you had an average employee that we carry their health insurance for one year, what would that look like as far as an expense?
The, the premium, uh, cost alone would be 6,000 in a year. And that's just the cost of the premium.
And we have one department where we could have exposure of 15 to 18 employees.
Can't afford that.
Yep.
So really, if somebody were to be hired to a full-time position, they could work there for a month and, you know, a part-time position opened up and they decided they wanted to go to part-time, we'd have to cover their health insurance unless we make this change.
Correct.
But this will stop it.
It would.
No employee will be able to move to part-time just because they want to move to part-time and work somewhere else. And that happens quite a bit. And we've got several departments that they try, that that goes on in.
It does, and they, you know, they resign.
Because they want to move to part-time, you know?
Right. And they resign for a number of reasons. They may have found, you know, something more in their career line in another county or another city and, you know, certainly don't want to keep them from doing that. We just need that 13-week break-in service.
Well, I think you'll see some more here just shortly after this term in Washington is up this session. I think they're going to make some more changes based on what I've been hearing and reading. Gentlemen, entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
I make a motion to approve the personnel policy as stated.
Will Sylvia have a second?
Second.
Motion's made. Second, is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Item number 13, board appointments and reappointments. I'd call County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, appointments, equalization and review board, reappoint Doug Ramsey for a year, David Odom one year, Linda Barnett, Bobby Norton and Darrell Robertson. Western Piedmont Council of Government, Sister Cities Association, reappoint Dwight Shook. David Eisenhower as alternate, that's for a one year. Appoint John Pilkington as Alexander County Review Officer, Watershed Administrator, Flood Plane Administrator. Plane Administrator, Subdivision Administrator, and Planning and Development Director. And also, there's a resolution, which you have a copy of, which needs to be included in that, that appoints John as the Alexander County Review Officer.
Correct. I entertain a motion to approve, gentlemen.
I move to approve all the appointments as listed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number 14, Mr. French, County Manager, Budget Ordinance Number 21 through 25, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. Several budget amendments. Budget number 21 is to increase Information Technology Budget for payment of computer user license fees from prior years and current year to comply with Microsoft User License Agreement. Prior fees paid were based on the wrong number of computers. To increase Inspection Department Budget for permits, forms, library, and the annual maintenance fee for the new inspection software installed at the end of fiscal year 2014. To increase detention budget for accrued leave payout due to employee leaving county employment. Vacation holiday time payouts were not included in the original budget. And to increase the DSS budget for additional crisis intervention payment funds and a Walmart grant. Budget Amendment Number 22 is to budget transfer to the School Capital Improvements Fund based on fiscal year 2014 school sales tax revenue in excess of fiscal year 2014 school debt service payments. Number 23 is to budget for half the local match required for the Rocky Face Park Phase II project. The remainder of the local match will be included in the fiscal year 2016 budget. And I will say that in that case, we had received notice from Partif, which is the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, that we'd received a $225,000 grant in 2013, so we need to move forward with that. The grant is only good for 36 months. Budget Amendment Number 24 is to budget for materials for the installation of a water line on Teak Town Road, 3,900 linear feet of 8-inch water line and seven hydrants beginning at Cedar Woods Road and ending at Jack Shook Lane. The City of Hickory will cover the construction costs. And number 25 is also another water project to budget for materials cost for the installation of water line on US 6490 West, 5,900 linear feet of 12-inch water line and seven hydrants from All Hilling Springs Road to Elanville Park Lane. City of Hickory will cover the cost, the construction cost of that also. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
On number 24, budget item number 24 and number 25?
Yes, sir.
The two water lines?
Yes.
Are any property tax funds being used for that?
No, sir, absolutely not. All water funds, yes, sir.
Okay. And on Budget Ordinance Number 21, to increase the Information Technology Budget for payment of computer user license fees from prior years and current year to comply with Microsoft User License Agreement. Prior fees paid were based on the wrong number of computers, fewer than actual. How did somebody lose count of how many computers? What departments was that in?
I do not know that. I'll find that out and let you know.
Okay. That's all I had.
Anybody else have any questions? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Oh, excuse me. Excuse me, I jumped. I apologize, gentlemen. All those in, I'll take, entertain a motion to approve. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Motion's made, there's a second.
Second.
Motion's made, there's further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 15, Other Business, County Manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention tonight. One, the sales tax update. Sales tax through January 2015 is $1,581,000. This is 43.87% of the $3,605,000 that was budgeted, but this is an 8.9% increase over last year. Received this afternoon, a copy of the jail statistics from Mike Harrison. The average total population per day is running 105.5 inmates per day. 96 of those are males, the rest females. The high day, population day, is 101 males, and that was on January 15th. And for females, it was, that number is 13. So just want to mention those numbers along with the sales tax. And I have some other information that needs to be discussed in closed session.
Mr. French, did you say 105 inmates?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. How many of those are from Alexander County?
36.
36? So 36 out of that 105 is from Alexander County?
Yes, sir.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. French.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Now, the consent agenda, as you see it there, before you, also remember on the consent agenda, we also have the resolution requesting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to appoint a new officer of Alexander County, and that is also included in the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. We do need to have a closed session under North Carolina General Statutes 143(c)(318.11) A145 and 6 to prevent disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. And I make that in the form of a motion. We will re-adjourn for the primary purposes of adjournment only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.